Cool, alrighty. Good afternoon, this is a workshop to discuss the concept for a proposed development called Moorestead. As a workshop, this is open to the public, but we don't take public comment, no decisions will be made, no minutes are kept, but again, we are live streaming, so if you could use the mics, it's picked up for broadcast, I would appreciate it.
Make sure they'll turn on.
If not, we can, and we can pass the mics around if need be.
You've got to get a green mic on here.
Which, which mic is that?
Mike one.
Some of them, they're, they're on, but the mic doesn't work.
Oh, they're all good, okay. Well, we'll just, well, if we could do some introductions.
Hello, I'm Donna Barantim with Atwell, I'm the project manager representing the Moorestead Real Estate LLC company, the Ownership Developer Group.
My name is Paul Schukas, I am with PCS Group. We are the planners and landscape architects for the project.
And I am Connor Crouse with PCS Group as well.
I'm Stephen Hayes, Senior Planner with Albert County.
Dallas Schroeder, Commissioner-elect in District 2.
Grant Thayer, Commissioner District 3.
Rick Paddock, Commissioner District 2.
Also here is Greg Thompson, our Director of CDS, Chris Richardson, Board Chair, so I guess with that, I'll turn it over to Greg or Stephen or to yourselves.
So, my name's Paul Schukas once again, I am one of the principals at PCS Group. I'm actually filling in for John Presswich, who was the lead on this, he had to unfortunately fly out of the country today to attend to some family matters up in Canada, but we've been working on this, and I figured I would try to be brief with our explanation of what's changed on this project. We've made some revisions to it since the last time I believe you have seen it, and then hopefully we can just exchange an open dialogue as to maybe some thoughts or what you'd like to see differently, or some of the things that you actually like that's happening. Currently, we've kept a lot of the same land use bubbles, we have forty percent open space still with the property, it does not, we're not anticipating doing a conservation community on this. Our density is within that PUD, Towns Development Code. We have made some revisions to this plan since the last time you saw it. While we have, starting on the south side of the site, some different portions of commercial that you had once anticipated and mixed use, what we've decided to do is follow a lot of the towns' standards as they relate to the specific uses within those commercial areas, and you can see the underlying zoning within each one, which is CMU. And then, as we work to the outskirts, the east and west portions of the site, those are going to be basically five acre lots, they'll fall in the Towns RA1 zoning. We feel like this is a really nice transition of density from what's actually happening, existing, to the east and west of us, as we work our way in, and you can see too, we've allotted for a large open space buffer that goes around the perimeter of the property. Sure.
The county, sorry.
Also, on the north side of the property, we're anticipating one acre lots, and that will fall under the County's R2 zoning, and then as we transition towards the middle of the property, and you can kind of see a dashed line that goes around this portion of the property, that's where I think we will begin to activate our PUD standards and create slightly different standards from the underlying zoning that the County has within those single-family districts. Some of the things that we've added to the plan, that we've taken note of, are along the north edge of the property, we've accounted for right-of-way, so that way, should there be the need for an east-west road connection, we'll potentially have that. You can also see on the north side of the property as well, we have road connections going to...
These two, to the north.
And then a potential third. Another large change, or something that we've been working through, is, so here are the three, one, two, three, and then, we've also been working with the utility company for a substation, and we have pulled that away from the county load, road, can you, can you point that out down there?
Yeah, we've moved the substation, the power substation, for the County's request, to the northwest corner of the commercial parcel, to, to get that substation off of the main frontage for County Road 174, and allow for better commercial distribution along that road.
We've also added patio homes and duplexes to, across from the commercial area, which is that darker corner, which was, I think, something...
Yeah, that came out of the...
That was a suggestion.
Commissioner meeting.
And then lastly, I believe we've coordinated with, or we've heard from the school district, they are in favor of this plan in a cash-in lieu versus a school site.
Correct.
And we'll continue to coordinate with the...
Parks and Rec.
Yeah, Parks and Rec District, that's in Elizabeth, correct?
Yeah.
It's, you know, as we develop the three different, like, sites where the community centers are, and you can kind of see those in blue. You can see that there's trail connectivity going to all of this, so the whole idea is to create a really, you know, active community, where we have a lot of different networks going from, pedestrian networks going from different planning areas, so hopefully it, while this looks like a, a large master plan community, it feels like more of something that fits within the context of the County. And then underneath it, would you all have, would you all like to add anything else to what I've said?
Yeah, maybe two more things? Oh. Just one other thing, we, we did reach out to, and have had a couple of meetings with the fire department, the Fire Department, and they are not looking for a new fire station. We've talked about potential phasing and emergency access, and, and they're agreeable with our, our plan that we have laid out, they are not expressing any concerns at this time. The second thing I wanted to mention is just, one of the other things, besides adding more diverse housing options here, which, in which we've come back and added the patio homes, and, and the additional roadway connections to the north, with two defined right-of-way and a third is a potential future right-of-way. And the third thing I wanted to mention that we, we took home from our last commission meetings, is that, or commission briefing, is that we've went back and explored our water rights, I mean, we heard from you guys traffic, and we heard water were your two primary concerns, in addition to these connectivity options and diverse housing options, so I wanted to mention the water. We, we took some time after last February's commission, Commissioner briefings, and went back to the Ownership Group and revisited the water rights, and did a pretty detailed study as to the amount of water that we need for the development, the three-hundred-year allocation, and, and reached a memorandum of understanding, letter of commitment with Spring Valley Ranch Metro District to provide water and sanitary service.
Have they got some water rights?
And they have, they have been in negotiations with Aqua to acquire back the water rights that were, that were originally underlying this property, and there has, it's my understanding that agreement has been reached, and that's why they have provided to us a letter of commitment for the, the amount of water we need for this community. So, and we are planning on reuse water as well, for irrigation, and, and we will be working with Spring Valley Ranch on well locations, storage for our water, irrigation ponds for storage of reclaimed water, and, and, you know, the technical utility infrastructure that's needed to, to support the community.
That brings up a question, the existing facilities, water and sewer...
Yes.
In Spring Valley Ranch. Do you think they will have to ask, do you think they will have to...
They will have to expand their facilities, they will essentially need to double their wastewater treatment plant, and then we have plans for additional water storage in well locations as well, so they will be expanding.
Just real quick. Expansion of Spring Valley Ranch's water and sewer plants to accommodate this and serve a separate subdivision would be a major 1041, according to the rules and regs we adopted earlier this year. You know, not a big deal one way or the other, we encourage that, we've, you know, advised other subdivisions that they should be doing that as well, but that would be the method to make that happen.
Yes, thank you Greg, for adding that. So I just wanted to point those differences out as well, and that we, where we are with the water concerns, so I feel like we, we have also had another neighborhood meeting within the last three months, addressed their comments, and we're, we're ready to submit, so we would like to take some feedback from you all now, on any specific questions you have.
Yeah, I'm basing this question based on conversations in the streets, so to speak, so, and I'm practicing law without a license, so just out of curiosity, from what the word on the street is, that there's quite significant legal issues amongst the owners or some, or financial institutions, I'm not sure which, I think part of it's in bankruptcy, if I understand it correctly. Give us an idea of how this is going to shake out, hopefully shake out.
So, it's my understanding with the Ownership Group in our recent conversations, that they are close to having the bankruptcy issue resolved, with an agreement on what, what is owed, and, and, and I don't know all the details that, and I can't speak to it, but what I understand is the bankruptcy is very close to being resolved, and, and that is one branch of the ownership entity, there is another branch of that ownership that is directing us to move forward with our application, and, and we would like to do so.
No, I appreciate you going back and looking at, at water, if this comes forward as an application, the expectation would be that Spring Valley would be present, more than just a letter of service, that, that we want to make sure we truly understand how they're going to provide, I mean, if you're not the water provider, then how are they going to provide the water and ensure that we are meeting our requirements? I know we do have, I think, at our EOCC meeting next week, I think we're receiving our final presentation of the Housing Needs Assessment, that's been under development this year, so I would ask that you, you look at that, and what, you know, as you're, you're designing properties, or looking at your final design.
My design.
Okay, and I would ask that you look at the Housing Needs Assessment, and if you bring forward final designs, how are you meeting some of the needs that have been articulated in, in that assessment? And I guess the other, again, forty percent open space is significant, and I know the bubbles don't really, you know, they seem to fill things up, but would ask that you look at wildlife corridors in relation with Parks and Wildlife, just, that's, I mean, I know we've got quite a bit up there, and I'll make sure we're, they have ways of getting through and around the community without disrupting their migration patterns, so...
We're now just showing the concept plan that we've developed at this time, just to go along with what Christopher was just talking about.
Much appreciated.
Just looking at this map here, these two roads that go off to the north, to an area that's not developed, that to me indicates that you are anticipating something happening to the north of you, kind of give us an idea what you're thinking? I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I can scroll a bit onto them.
I'll chime in if you would like to, but we added those at the request of, of the County, for potential future access as development grows, we, we do not know of anything specific to the north of us, and those roads would be the last things to be built, and it's, it's all contingent upon development to the north.
Yeah, there, there is nothing that, so I, I'll try to answer both of your questions, so there, there is nothing to the north that we know of to date, and it was on the request with previous meetings, that we take into consideration an east-west connection on the north end of our property, and if we're doing that, then it also makes sense to have connectivity from our neighborhood to that. The...
Sorry, Paul, one more piece to that, you know, it was also brought to our attention that there's kind of a triangle of land that forms based on running creek open space, and how that transects that upper part of this northern site, and so again, yeah, it was just planning for the potential of that being an island, we wanted to give access.
And then, regarding your question of bankruptcy, we, we honestly aren't privy to the details of that, however, there, almost always there's a title report, and that is submitted with this PUD that's current within thirty days, and that will be very transparent as to what liens and encumbrances would be on the property at that time when this was submitted. That, that's the best that I can do for that.
In, in that respect, and again, that's, I know, perhaps weight cart before the horse, but we would probably be looking as a county to put requirements for infrastructure completion earlier in a project, if there's a sense that, that financially there's risk there, we don't want to see half a community built and abandoned, or, I mean, I know that's not ever anyone's intent, but, and then the other is, you said you had held another community meeting, was there, would you share briefly what, what was covered, what maybe concerns were addressed, or what might still linger?
I, I don't have the minutes of those, of that meeting, or the comments and response in front of me, Connor, I don't know if you do, we can, I'll pass the mic then, if you want to just scour through there, maybe hit some of the highlights. Do you have it, Greg? This is one file here or two, we can make sure the commissioners did a copy on this? It's already been passed along, okay, oh, so I do have it here, so, so, we, you know, gave a brief overview of the project, what's being intended for the development, we also informed the public of the changes that we made to the, the PUD plan since having our prior neighborhood meeting, updated them, you know, on the additional housing options that were being planned, the update on the water rights situation, and then, they asked about, you know, traffic and how we were going to address that, and we informed them that we have a traffic consultant hired as part of our team, and they will do a traffic study to evaluate where we need roadway infrastructure improvements. We obviously intend to expand County Road 174 from County Road 21 to County Road 29, so that full extent, north side, and then also, the east side, no, I'm sorry, the west side of County Road 29, and the east side of County Road 21, up to, you know, the access locations to our development, so that's certainly planned, anything beyond that, we will look to our traffic consultant to advise us on that. We explained about the, the water rights, and there's still, the public seems to be still expressing some concern for their wells, and, and, you know, potentially not having enough water supply for everyone. I, our group informed them that we will be providing a, a utility study for this project, that will identify what our water needs are, what our water rights availability is, more technical information regarding cooperation with Spring Valley Ranch, and, and expansion of their facilities, and so, I'm not sure that...
Just as a comment there, we've been very adamant that these subdivisions cannot use the Upper Dawson or the Dawson Water.
Yep.
They have to go down to at least the Denver and the Arapahoe, and possibly the Laramie-Fox Hills, I suppose.
That's right.
But that's where we're going to do our water calculation on that, and the reason for that is, almost all the older facilities, homes, ranches, however you want to describe this, use those two upper water aquifers, and we don't want to put it in a situation where you're competing with them.
Understood, and, and all that will be explained in our utility study, that is our intent as well, to, to go to the deeper aquifers and not use Upper Dawson.
I guess, has there been thought into the overall community management after build-out of HOA or an overlay district, or how would...
Yes.
That be...
There'll be an HOA, or I'm sorry, there'll be a metro district established for, for the storm water pipelines, storm water management ponds and roads, and then, as far as water and sanitary, that will be an expansion of Spring Valley Ranch's Metro District to, to provide that service to us, so we will have basically two metro districts serving property.
And then that question was kind of a lead-off on water, I guess in my mind, of final landscaping for individual homes, if there, we haven't required zero-scaping, we like to see people reduce water usage, I know some communities, either the overlay district or the HOA has approval on final landscaping for individual owners, so, just, just something to think about, is...
Yes, that's something we, we had planned to provide to within the development guidelines, how much square footage per lot would be irrigated, or zero-scape, we definitely have zero-scape and conservation in mind to try to minimize water requirements. Anything else, Paul?
Yeah, you said one other thing, when you started your presentation, about the forty percent open space, and it sounded like you were talking to Elizabeth Park and Rec to somehow become involved, or were you going to manage it through a metro district or something locally?
The metro district will manage the onsite parks and trails, et cetera, our metro district will...
Yeah, so the district will maintain anything that is a public improvement or has public access associated with it, so if the, the parks are open to the public, that would be a qualified district improvement. So, anything associated with a horizontal improvement, that could be qualified for public use, roads, storm, the district will help build and finance. Also, you know, I, I do think that there are most likely with this PUD, the negotiations of a development agreement and a statement of commitments and things like that, and as you begin to read some of the different reports that come with this, traffic impact analysis, things like that, that maybe touches on the trip generation and, and what some of those impacts are, I think the commissioners will have, I believe, a better understanding of exactly what kind of commitments you would like to see from this develop.
And that road study would also look into 21 and 29, not just the internal?
That road study will most likely look at a lot of off-site intersections, and how they perform now and with this community, and what level of service those intersections will have, once this is at full build-out, in, you know, 2030, or whatever year that is. Correct. So basically, what I heard, just from right now, is, you know, water, landscape requirements, design guidelines, things like that are definitely something that you all are interested in seeing as a layer to this submittal. Okay, that's great.
And making sure that Spring Valley facilities are big enough to handle all that.
Right, and I, I assume that is going to be handled with that statement of commitments, I don't, I can't imagine they would have committed to that without, okay.
We're aware of the need to expand it, but there are engineers who are working with our engineers to figure out how, how to phase it, what capacities are needed to implement.
I guess, just for what it's worth, I mean, we, we understand, you know, growth is happening, growth will happen, population's growing, we need to house people, we really want to see projects that increase what we, I mean, for lack of a better term, it's more of what we are, not something that's new and different, or, you know, completely at odds with, with the existence... the existing, what exists as Albert County. I know you're immediately north of, of pieces of Spring Valley. I mean, there's, it looks like your initial phasing is kind of clustered tight to Spring Valley and away from other owners, so there's not immediate impacts on the existing folks in some country, and it looks like Taos, so, I mean, conceptually it looks good, and so, but look forward, I guess, if and when we see an application.
Yeah, we're hoping to give some breathing room to adjacent folks.
Just looking at the second phase where it shows community pool, and then there's a bike pump track and things like that, so are those just proposed, or is that what actually planning on putting into the subdivision?
So through some of our talks with, you know, Elizabeth Parks and Rec and various other entities, that will be an ongoing development to make sure that, again, it's more along the lines of, or of what you are versus something new, like trying to be too urban or, you know, so on and so forth. And so that will be developing through, through time as this project advances.
Okay, I guess that was one thing. I was wondering whether you were coordinating with Elizabeth Parks and Rec to get an idea what was needed in the community or whatever, if, if this was to go forward.
So that's ongoing communication with them. This is based a little bit on previous conversations about, you know, 15 months back, but we've had conversations since that will be with the formal application, kind of showing, you know, more of what is anticipated for what is needed within the kind of overarching area, so.
If I could just get a clarification, you had mentioned earlier, one part of the ownership was wanting to move forward. Is the ownership united in wanting to move forward with this, or are there disagreements?
Oh, no. The, the ownership is completely in cooperation with us moving forward on this application. I just meant the legal entities with, that we are contracted under, are heading us in that direction. The ownership group has a couple other ownership LLCs, and so they're affected by the bankruptcy as well, but the ownership that is directing this project, they're all on board together, working together, wholeheartedly moving forward. Yeah.
What's your estimation of timing?
I mean, you, usually it's about a two-year process just to get design and construction documents before we can get an early grading permit to either start roadway improvements or things like that, wouldn't you say?
Yes, I, I mean, our, our timing at this point is to get the updated title report, take any feedback that you all have, button up our, our things that we need for our application, and the things we're hearing today, and, and we'd like to submit, start getting the referral comments, getting your county review comments, and start the process, but yes, I imagine it will be a couple years before we're breaking ground if, if it all goes well and gets over. And then as far as buildout, this is a long-term planned community. It's hard to speculate how long it'll take.
If you could tell us exactly what the economy is going to do for the next decade, we'd really appreciate it.
Exactly.
Now, if I, if I recall the first, conceptually, the first thing we saw, that what you have is Phase Six was largely commercial, so now, what I see, it pretty much matches the, the lot sizes and the existing subdivisions across the way, so.
Yes. It has evolved.
Yeah. Yeah, that's really all I, I don't, anybody does? Stephen or Greg, do you, do you have anything?
The fire department went kind of quickly over. The fire department, you quickly ran by that. One of the things they were really concerned about was connectivity, that now that you're filling in this area in between, we really need this east-west access. Could you talk to the commissioners about your plans for 174? Is that early or late in the project, and how's it working with your phasing?
Okay. Based on our last meeting, where representatives from the fire department were on our call, our team meeting, they asked about that, and you're right, Stephen, and how we planned on addressing that is County Road 174 would be built as part of the first phase up to this entry drive here in Phase One, from, from the west side to that access drive, and that there's currently an access, frontage road access that would be our secondary access point to the east to County Road 29, and the fire department was happy with that as far as the initial phase, having two life safety access points to the property. And then the second phase, we would see developing a connection here to Hunt Circle, and that would provide another access point from that direction, moving into the Phase Two area. But as we, you know, make our submittals, we, we plan to work closely with the fire department and make sure they, I know that there are going to be a referral, so we'll make sure that we work with them on, on what they need.
Donna, could you talk a little bit about the core project? You mentioned where the substation would be located. Are there lines anticipated to be on the north side of 174 or on the south side of 174?
I am still waiting for their transmission plans, you know, to, to know the details of that, and I'm happy to pass that on to you once I get it, and, and, but we do plan on showing the right-of-way where they want their, well, their easements, I should say, for where they want their transmission means to go, but it's my understanding they're going to go straight south, and then I believe they're going to transition from there on the north side of County Road 174. But I will share with you concrete information when I, when I, you know, get it.
Do you have a sense as to how wide that easement would be on your property, whether that's 100 foot or more or less than that?
Greg, I can't remember. I'm remembering 75 maybe, but let me, let me dig into that, and I'll share that with you.
And, and these are poles that are roughly 80 to 100 foot in the air or so for the, the commissioner's edification?
I think so, but again, I'm going to make that note and get you some more information on that.
I know I said I had nothing else, but as I was just looking at this, sorry, just throw it out there early, in the internal road network design, since your kind of collapse between Hay Gulch and, and Running Creek, the road network that would carry folks that live in Phase Five, south through two and three, just that, you know, I know this is just a conceptual drawing, all the roadways are the same, but whether wider boulevard type, there's something to carry that traffic from Phase Five homes eventually, that we're not overloading what looks like the little main drag just to get out of the community in the, in the Phase Two or Phase Three areas. Again, I think that comes out in the wash when you're doing the real design, but...
Yes.
Just conceptually, it all looks like the roads carry the same load, but there's going to be a lot more coming through what's, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I could see this, this main loop being slightly, you know, wider.
No, that's exactly what I was looking at, yeah.
And a little more on that, it's hard to tell at this scale, obviously, but we have delineated a kind of, a wider street for the main connection area, and so we can add some labels to when we're getting the final documents together. It'll be a lot clearer just what the widths are and, you know, just where the primary access is, so.
It just looks like a lot of it's very, a lot of it's very walkable, so just not overload.
And the earlier that you got 174 from here to there, I think a lot of the community, because you got 174 here and you got a new 174 here, that would really make the entire area beneficial, or be beneficial to the entire area. I hope you understand what I'm saying.
Of course.
That was a given.
We appreciate the fact that you've respected the county's wishes with diversity of housing, and you're offering that. Could you point out to the commissioners the areas on the plan where you're planning on some, the townhouses and, and patio homes and things? And then second, when you're pointing those areas out, are any of those intended to be rental, or is everything in your plan to be sold or returned?
So the duplex area that we're looking at is currently going to be down here. Again, we're looking at trying to contain, you know, the higher density around your commercial parcels, as well as your larger community amenity areas. So right now, this PA 14, which also correlates over here to the darkest of the yellow ones, just, just for you guys' information.
In terms of rental versus fee simple, I, I don't think that that's been determined yet, and that probably will be covered in the co-covenants and restrictions, depending on what is actually allowed within the community. It's, it's too early to, to begin to speak to that, unfortunately.
Maximum requirement, so if you're building three and four stories, yes.
The commercial is of significant importance to us, especially adding this many number of residents, and also to help us with our balance between residential and retail and commercial, and also some employment opportunities for our residents as well. Do you have any early, I know this is conceptual, but early ideas about kind of what you want to market to, or are some market studies that tell us what do you think will work here?
That's a great question. I mean, the hard corner, obviously, it's a, it's a big enough parcel to fit a, a larger retailer like a grocery, but for now, we're just following the uses that are in the county as it relates to those three different bubbles, and as this grows legs and gets more interest and more builders are looking at it, I think that you'll start to see commercial applications and site plans come through for those specific uses. And, and like you were just mentioning, it can be anything from employment to retail.
I believe the ownership group, I believe the ownership group is thinking a gas station would make sense. They're exploring all options, really. We did hear in our neighborhood meeting that it might be some interest in, and need for urgent care, so that's on the table, but we'll have to see how it develops, but they are interested in pursuing what makes the most sense for the community.
Is there anything else that we can take away with us at this time? It's been really helpful. You know, we, you know, we... I, I know you're taking time out of your day, so I, I appreciate you doing that.
Staff has appreciated your respect for our master plan, our housing plan that the commissioners have adopted over time. I know that, I'm not sure who it was on your team, but has in-depth looked at our codes, and then you, you have reflected those, our requirements on your plan. Now, this is concept, and the, we're going to have to make sure you, you honor that as we go forward and get the details, but I appreciate the fact that you took the time to look at all of our past documents and our current regulations and honored our requirements.
You're, you're most welcome, and it, and it doesn't do us any good to come here with this and then do an old bait and switch. It's just going to prolong the process. So I mean, this is, at least for the time being, what our full intentions are of submitting, but more in a general zoning document type of form. The zoning document won't have lots on it necessarily. This was just to start to show how it conceptually works.
So I was just going to say, so application-wise, it looks like, you know, we would be seeing rezoning special districts, and between you and Spring Valley, I don't know who would handle the 1041 for water provision, whether that generates from you or it generates from Spring Valley Ranches, but yeah, so it'll be a relatively complex set of hearings to mesh all that together, and I assume you'd be a preliminary plat and at least a final for at least, I'm assuming Phase One, you'd be...
That would be, that would be great. That would be our intention.
Yeah, because, okay, in my view, just a, a preliminary plat to lock in entitlements for some uncertain futures, you know, not quite as positive as coming in with a final plat as well, to, to know that we're going to start moving forward on a project that's not speculative, and, yeah.
Expand a little bit on that, and Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we talked about as far as preliminary plat, and we, we were trying to work with the county and find out exactly what is needed for our, for submittal, and besides the PUD application, PUD document and guidelines, you know, one of the things we talked about was to provide a preliminary plat for, for the primary roads throughout the neighborhood, so that you could see how that was going to be laid out, and, and then more of a, a bubble for these areas that would be, the roads within, in them would not be defined at this point in time, so just the primary roads through, for circulation throughout the subdivision for preliminary plat. And then we would go in with the first phase of development with more defined, so that would be the first filing. We would have a full plat for that community, the number of lots and their streets locked down for that first filing. So I thought that's how we would probably approach it.
I, I think that we probably need to talk about that a little bit more. I, I think that generally speaking, what we have seen is more, you know, kind of the next step would be the zoning, where you establish, you know, the ability to do certain things, you know, kind of throughout the, the different areas. Typically, a preliminary would show more than just how the streets stitch together, but how all the infrastructure might stitch together. So the drainage, you know, water sewer, et cetera, so that, you know, the fire department knows they're going to have enough water way over there when they might come through, and then you'd come through later with that first filing for the detailed information on, so on this piece here, whatever that first filing is, and then second filing, et cetera. So I, I think it's more than just the roads, though, for...
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't mean just the road, along with those roads, any storm infrastructure, any water infrastructure, sanitary irrigation, and it would be a spine backbone system of infrastructure, and then the individual filings... backbone system of infrastructure, and then the individual filings would connect to the, whatever water and sanitary and storm utilities are phased out from there. We do have storm water detention ponds planned and how we're going to phase them, so all of that will be forthcoming. But yes, didn't mean just the roads. With the roads comes the utilities as well, yeah.
At this point, I think further discussion really needs to wait until we see applications, so.
Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you very much, guys. Thank you all.